The next item is item number 20, application for a binding report in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 15-5394, block 73, lot 10, 11 Fulton Street, in the South Street Seaport Historic District, a contemporary market building designed by Benjamin Thompson and Associates and built in 1983. This is an application to alter the ground floor, replace storefronts and signage.
Commissioners, Jared Knowles and preservation staff, this is an application for modifications to 11 Fulton Street in the South Street Seaport Historic District. Chris Curry from Ortiz Hall.
Okay, thanks Jared. Up in the front, restate your name please and proceed.
Chris Curry with the Heritage Corporation, Commissioner, Attorney and Commissioner, or Chairman, excuse me. I just wanted to say a few things before I turn it over to Chris Sharpless from Shop Architects. There's been some articles being written about our project after our CD1 meeting the other day and I just wanted to, before we started, just clear it a little bit. This is a three-story building, not a two-story building as was mentioned, and you all know this by looking at your materials. But the main reason for coming here today is to make adjustments to the building so that we can house a multiplex theater, IPIC theaters, we announced in December. We've signed a lease and we need to create a volume of space that will work for their operation. While we do that, we're also wanting to add things to the building that will make it more conducive to retail on South Street, but also on Beekman. And we also, while we're doing those things, want to make some improvements, we believe, to Front Street and also to Fulton. And the importance to this is that the building was damaged significantly in Superstorm Sandy. When we reopen in 2015, we're going to have a completely new lineup of tenants. This is not a big box opportunity that was mentioned in one of the local blogs. We expect to have relatively small spaces on the ground level, which is why we included a lease plan in your package. The third level, we've not determined what would be on the third level. We were expecting food uses on the third level, could be restaurants, could be other food activities. But mainly, this is about food, fun and fashion for the South Street Seaport and for the residences in there. But that's the main reason for the work that's being done to the building. I'd like to turn it over, are we going to a lease first? Are we going to a lease Quaysbar to talk about historical significance of our building?
Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Elise Quaysbar from Quaysbar. Fulton Market Building is located here in the Historic District, the South Street Seaport Historic District, between South Street, Beekman, Front and Fulton Street. It was built in the early 1980s as part of the Rouse development. And I'm just going to walk you around the building. It's pretty much in its condition from when it was constructed in the 1980s. And we'll just kind of walk around. Chris mentioned the overall plan for the building. Today, we're going to talk specifically about replacement storefronts for the existing aluminum and glass storefronts. New signage, which is actually pretty much based on the Landmarks Commission rules for signage and for lighting, a few other minor changes that Chris Sharpless will discuss. Along Fulton Street, at the ground floor, you know, the projecting aluminum and glass storefronts, they actually are part of the original proposal and date to the 1980s. They had canvas awnings on top of them to keep the sun out, the glazed portion up above. Chris will talk about this a little bit, but I just want you to note in your photographs that there's a bluestone sidewalk that runs along, around the front of the building, but it sort of bumps in and out along Fulton Street and the granite pavers for the street are on the outside of that. So just note that as you go along. On South Street, on the ground floor, you note that there are columns on the street edge, or rather, the building edge, and recessed behind them were the fish stalls that were left over from the 1950s, Fish Market Building, part of which was demolished as part of the construction of this building. And what remains today, and some of the interiors were demolished recently, what remains today is the brick wall and the roll-down security gates. The proposal is to create new storefronts that will be of the same language as the ones of the rest of the building, but at the street wall, which will help enliven the activity along South Street. Also note, this is not a great picture here, but it might show up better in your book, on the second floor, there are louvers along the front of the building and they are also part of the original design and will be retained. This is Beekman Street and Beekman is kind of the back of house part. There are garages, loading dock, and allowing expanses of brick. The proposal will start to open that up a little bit, regularize the openings and make it a little bit more appealing and bring more activity in the building here. This building, or rather, this facade also has louvers in many of the windows in the facade and they will be retained as well. These are the storefronts along Front Street and they too will be replaced there through the two-story configuration underneath the canopy and then the entry on the corner. I would like to say that the canopy is being retained, repaired and replaced as necessary, but in kind, Fulton Market sign is being retained and the basic configuration of the building is being retained. So I'd like to hand this, oh, one more thing, just for clarification. This grand building from 1882 was replaced in 1949 with this one-story building that was for the market. Most of that was demolished early on and then, or in the 1980s and was replaced with this building. Chris Sharpless from Shop Architects will describe the proposal.
Yes, I'm going to describe pretty much what we're looking at in terms of the exterior.
Restate your name for the record, please, thanks.
Chris Sharpless from Shop Architects.
Thank you.
Go over the proposal for the exterior of the building, then my colleague Paul Frederickson from Shop will talk a little about the signage and lighting. So as Chris Curry mentioned, you know, there is some remodeling, some repositioning of structure on the interior in order to accommodate the program. The main focus is taking the existing series, there's eight trusses that span from South Street to pretty much the center of the building and they're at that second level. Basically, what we want to do is move five of those trusses up in order to open that space up to allow the program to work. And you can also see along the Front Street side that we're removing the mezzanine level there and really opening that up to create a double-height space. Those are pretty much the main things on the interior. This is a view, a section cutting through sort of north to south. It shows where those mezzanine levels have been removed along Front Street. So to talk more in detail about the four elevations of the building, we'll start on Fulton. And, you know, as Elise was saying, there's a lot of things going on here and one of the challenges was to try and create some coherence in terms of not only the fenestration, but the detailing, really pull her around all four elevations of the building. And at the same time, also being concerned with how the bluestone meets the facade and really begins to sort of in a way create an apron around the whole building. So what you see above and all the views you're going to see is that the top of the slide is always going to be existing condition and then what we're proposing. So the first thing you notice is that actually, the paving, the way it works right now actually doesn't meet some of the ADA requirements. So one of the things that we're looking at here is by pulling that bluestone around, we basically place everything at the same level. You can also see that we've sort of configured some of the areas where you have pop-ins on the entrances off of Fulton to really create a more coherent sort of massing along that street. And then this is a section, the one on the left, where you see the facade storefront keying up and actually connecting to the underside of the canopy, which is the existing condition as it is today. And what we're proposing is basically disconnecting that elevation, that facade from that canopy and really extending or basically defining the retail, the commercial space as this clean volume that extends out from the lower level of the Market Building out on Fulton.
But the awning remains?
The awning remains. It's a zinc awning, as Elise said, we're going to refurbish it, recondition it, but the geometry, the profile, the angle of the awning is to remain.
How much space is there between the bottom gutter and that little curb underneath it?
This, this right here, as you're talking about here, what is the 3D?
What's the awning doing? Is it doing anything or just it's there because it's been there?
Yeah, I think one of the, obviously on some streets like South Street and Beekman and Front, it actually sheds you from the weather. What it does on Fulton is it brings some continuity to the whole building because it basically wraps all the way around. I think you'll see that when we get to some of the views.
Fair enough.
So again, the top view is existing condition. You can see, you know, it's sort of deceptive because that glass that you see at the top is actually angling up and gauging the canopy. And what we're looking at here is to really disengage that canopy, really make that a sort of the constant datum that goes around the whole building. Really cleans it up and creates some clarity as you approach it, especially from Fulton Street. And then in this view, we actually remove the canopy so you can actually get to see what's behind it. And in most cases, it's brick, so to re-point that, recondition that brick, bring it back to what it looked like when it was first built in 83.
But you're fiddling in a lot of the brick.
Yeah, and then, well, this area here is, yes, we're, this area here where you have the angled glass hitting up to the canopy, the brick lintel is basically realigning to where it is on the other elevations. And then we'll get into the fenestration because one of the things you'll notice as you see some of the fixtures is back in the 80s when they did this building, the extrude aluminum frames were flat stock. There's no relief, there's no detailing to these. And one of the things that we're looking at is to actually create some projections, some relief in these mullions, so it just doesn't look like one flat glass facade with metal aluminum sticks in it. And here, this is sort of a series of views as you're walking down Fulton towards South Street, where you see how it begins to project out, generating this volume that's captured underneath the canopy. And you can start to begin to see the six-inch relief on these mullions as they project out towards the glass. Again, sort of thinking about some of the qualities of what you see in some of the cast iron detailing, even though this is being done in aluminum frame stock. This is a view as it is today and then this is a rendered view where you really get a sense. And again, this, by disengaging it from that canopy, the canopy just continues to sweep around the South Street. So you really feel as this airy sort of element that is not grounded or connected to any of the storefront fenestration. So as we move around Front Street on the South Street, the thing that's quite noticeable, this is where, again, where the fish stalls were. They were not at the same plane as the building facade or the sidewalk. They're actually set in. And so what we looked at was, so instead you have the canopy over your head and then they were pushed back another 10 feet. What we looked at is actually bringing that out, justifying it to the building edge, to the sidewalk edge, so it's right in plane with the overhang of the canopy. And then wrapping the whole side, removing all the concrete sidewalk and wrapping that with bluestone. So the apron that's on Fulton is wrapping around all the way to South Street.
So you're saying that the canopy, if you had drawn it there, it'd be a dash line parallel that's aligned with?
Yeah, so what you see here is sort of a little stranger. You have this canopy and suddenly it pops in again. So you've got this dark shaded space and what we thought would be nice is again, make that space really the room of the canopy and extend, you know, align the new storefront with the existing brick.
But in that case, it's really functioning the way a canopy functions.
Exactly.
As opposed to the other one that you showed of your modification, where it's just sort of a canopy over a roof that's not doing anything.
Yeah, well, again, as Elise was saying, it's the way it was built to begin with, they have this appendage built out and then they glued it to the canopy. What we thought was, at least let's free the canopy up. So it's a constant around the whole building, even though that piece is sort of projecting out. So here, it becomes much cleaner, it's more behaving more the way it does on Beekman and Front. And then, so you know, you have the metal shutter doors and the concrete columns, they've been absorbed, again, following the language of the pilesters above, bringing that down. But in this case, you know, it's metal, you know, it's aluminum frame and glazing with insulated metal panel. And creating sort of, you know, and then there's a variety of different base spaces. So it's really just sort of articulated a bit more, generated more of a human scale. And then as Elise was saying, you have this existing green corrugated metal that's on the building. So basically, we're reconditioning that, but painting it in the dark charcoal. I'll talk a little more about the materials when we get further along. But basically, changing those colors, but the metal corrugated panels remain. And then here, if you remove the canopy, again, reconditioning it. In this case, you see the metal panel here as it is up there, but here we're doing it, it's being completely replaced in that case. And then these are sort of section views. Again, using a similar language, but generating some variety in window and base spaces and threshold points. This is it today, here it is now, rendering. And then when we get to Beekman, you know, Beekman's always been seen sort of as the back door and right across you've got fresh saw, you've got some nice cafes there. So we wanted to create more of a double-loaded experience for the pedestrian. So the challenge here is, you know, you've got the loading docks, you do have some egress from the upper levels that need to come down here. But we thought first, let's try and locate the loading area to the middle of the block and try and open up the corner here with retail frontage and then another retail opportunity there. So at least there was some way to activate that street with some pedestrian access. And here, you know, on the top view, you really see, now, just in terms of the loading dock base, it's the same width, they're just being moved more to the middle of the block. So in the top view, you see a lot of brick, the loading dock base, and then one entrance off of the corner of Front and Beekman. And here you start to see, you know, these moments where we're able to bring in some type of frontage along that street.
But you're closing off one of the entrances, you turn that into a front.
Yeah, that's an egress as a result of the program above. We need to create an egress stair, a fire stair from the upper level down to there. And then split the brick. Closer up detail. Again, I think in this case, this is the existing condition and so as you turn the corner, you feel like, you know, at least there is some connectivity to the front along South Street.
Go back to the existing, just for.
Yeah. So and then you see then to the right of that retail is then the loading dock. And then you get a little more retail and by that time, you're sort of right in front of some of the other cafes. And then Front Street where it really is, it's sort of the same articulated fenestration all the way across this whole elevation. And it's, as I was saying, it's a very flat stock that they're using, not much for leaf. So here, you know, generating sort of a different base space, which is a bit more obvious in the elevation, and sort of scaling it a bit, but adding more detail. Here you start to see a little more activity in terms of the way the fenestration is being modeled there. And then above, you have the metal panel underneath the canopy. And then these are some views that show some of the detailing. And so this is the corner of Beekman and Front. And you start to see, in this one, you start to see some of the shadow of the root leaf, the mullion. So it's a six-inch profile that we're using here. So that's what creates that, those shadow lines. And again, trying to scale it more to the pedestrian so it doesn't just look like this tight sort of flat facade. And it also allows us, you know, when we get in, Paul gets into some of the signage and lighting, creates some niches, some ways to even articulate that sort of fenestration some more. And so these are the materials, you know, the top left, re-pointing the brick, reconditioning the building, you know, removing or what?
I'm sorry, could you just go back to 37 or 38, I'm sorry, previous? What happens behind the spandrels on the level above the retail level? What's happening physically behind that space?
So you, like in this elevation, what happens?
Right, what happens in the second floor?
So that's part of the theater space.
It's part of the theater.
Yes.
Black walls. But on the outside?
So here you can, you can see some of that work there. And again, this also plays into some of the ideas of how we can begin to light that space underneath, create some highlights, especially in the evening.
Because the canopy is curved in just that area or other?
That's the existing canopy.
Yeah, there's a curve or on the corner of Front and Fulton as well and I believe on the other opposite end as well. Okay, so just in terms of material, so the second image, number three or whatever, the bluestone, so repairing what's there, but really bringing that apron out and really capturing all sides of the building within this bluestone ribbon around. And then this is very hard to see, but that's a section cut through one of the mullions. And the part that's justified to the top is actually that six-inch sort of relief depth. And we believe it's important to create that sort of human-scale articulation for the facade of the storefront. It's not black, it's more charcoal, it just looks black here, is the mullion color. And then looking at the two grannies for the 18-inch base, you know, using this flying black face granite for there and then a lighter granite for the portions above where you have the brick. And then, again, to try and highlight and create some more lightness underneath the canopy, that will be in white. So now I'm going to turn it over to Paul and he's going to take you through some of the signage and lighting concepts.
My name's Paul Frederickson, with Shop Architects. So we developed a signage master plan to give to potential future tenants. Through there, we developed three types of signs that would be allowed to go in the building. It would be a band panel sign, a bracket sign, and then your typical glazing sign. Your first sign here is the typical band panel sign. This would be able to go above, only above storefront doors, directly above that. It would be a metal sign painted with either pinned tenant logos or painted on tenant logos. If they were to be pinned, they would only be able to project one inch off of the face of the signage. And the band panel sign itself would only be able to project three inches off of the storefront face. And then we went on to say, no neon flashing or backlit signs would be allowed around the building. Here's a bracket sign. So this is attached perpendicular to the face of the building. The same thing goes here, no neon backlit or flashing signs allowed. And then we've given a minimum 10-foot above sidewalk that the sign has to stay clear above. And then our last type of signage, glazing signage. The restriction here is it cannot substantially, it cannot substantially reduce the transparency of the glazing of the storefront as well, it can't take up more than 20% of that actual square footage. Here's some more guidelines we place on the three types of signage in terms of their placement around the building. For the band panel sign, these would only go above doors, as I stated before. For the bracket signs, that would be allowed, one tenant, each tenant would be allowed one bracket sign per elevation of the building, unless that tenant's storefront edge exceeded more than 40 feet, then they'd be allowed to. And then for the glazing type of signage, number three, you could only, you would only be allowed to have one window unit per storefront bay. So this is what we're considering a storefront bay, you only get one piece of glazing in there.
So what is the signage? Any one store could have how many signs?
So if, for bracket signs, one store could get one rep.
All together, all of them?
It depends on how many storefront bays they occupy.
But a minimum of three, right bracket, overhead and window and then per bay?
I mean, if they would choose to put three different types of signs on there.
But you have two bracket signs on the corner or is it?
This is just, right, so this is just to show the potential around the storefront enclosure on Fulton Street, how it could be applied. And then I'll walk you through the lighting portion, for reasons here. Again, you have the existing Fulton Street facade and the proposed. What we're proposing to do is replace the existing blue jelly jars and these pendant lights with a few fixtures. First, we start with linear LED strips, which we place underneath the gable on the third-level terrace to give it a nice glow. And then we would bring in these wall, these bronze wall sconces to place along your third-level terrace. And then we would have adjustable floodlights to provide lighting to the flagpoles, the Fulton Market granite entablatures, and also to provide downlighting, moonlighting onto Fulton Street. From there, we also have this adjustable light that would be placed underneath the canopy, concealed, so you couldn't see it, to provide a nice secondary glow to accompany the exterior pendant lights that would be hung from the canopy, creating a full band around the building, with the exception of the Fulton Street enclosure. We walk around to South Street, same thing here, same concept. The pendant lights continue their band following the canopy. Same with the concealed lights underneath the canopy, the bronze sconces, and then floodlighting. This theme continues around to Beekman and to Front Street as well. So this is the, a section of our presentation that we just, this is to show the placement of the potential, the theaters that will be between the first level and the second level. At certain parts of the building's elevation, you'll have a theater wall that ranges anywhere from two to four feet in back of the face of glazing. And then we've identified the zones around the building. On Fulton Street, you won't have any. On South Street, in purple, this is that wall that might be two to four feet behind the face of glazing here. So a lot of it happens, again, corrugated panels, and then you have this one section here.
So there's, so there's glass with something behind it and then there's a panel on the outside?
Oh, no, 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 so it would just, this is, this is vision glass still.
Right, and so beside that is, beside that or?
So you have your, your, the pur-
And then going to your, your left or the right?
Let me, let me go back.
Going to our left, what is that stuff?
What is the brown?
That's, that's next door to?
I can answer this question. The, the gray here are the existing louvers that were designed into the original part of the building. Existing condition is up here. And so the existing louvers will be retained, they'll be painted the color to match the, the dark gray. And the purple is only a diagram to illustrate where you'll have walls that are going to be set two to four feet beyond the glass. So it's, this is diagrammatic, it's not going to be purple, it's not close up.
But what happens between the vision glass and the back of a wall that nobody can get to and you can't paint and you can't clean, you can't? And, and so it's regular glass and then there's some painted wall?
I can speak to that, there's long going to be ways to get back there. I can't tell you how we're going to do that yet, but there will be ways to get back there. And ultimately, the theater will come for you and present, I believe, what they think might be a nice treatment to the walls, so that there's not blank walls behind the windows. But that's something that will come here.
It'll come here.
Right, but let's just say, for example, since you already have louvers that are opaque, why not continue that across? You already have that as a rhythm that's going across the entirety of the facade? It's just so advantageous to having vision glass here if it's going to be looking at nothing.
More, more advantageous to having vision?
Well, something, something as opposed to looking at nothing.
That louver shows a corrugated metal, it says somewhere?
It's a corr- corrugated metal.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's the same material as the canopy, actually, just a color green?
With a, yeah, slightly different interval, the corrugation.
It's not even ugly, it's, it's arguably a nice material, right?
I thought that in the drawing it said, it said corrugated metal.
Yeah, so the corrugated metal happens here. And then you have a, a section of louvers for all mechanical equipment.
There you go.
In these two small locations.
Okay, thank you, sure. So the areas in purple are the areas where the actual theater will be within theater space?
Yes.
That's, that's the intention?
Yes.
Is it just on this elevation?
I'll walk, I'll walk you around. So again, Fulton Street, you don't have any of that condition. South Street. Beekman. And then Front Street.
It's a lot of them.
Front Street.
It's three elements.
No, so. So just to continue with that, from an architectural perspective, never mind the theater, because there are tenants. You're, you're addressing this from an architectural approach, where you know that behind the windows, behind the vision glass, you have a non-function. And as far as I can tell, it's not intended to be vitrines for costumes or something like that. Maybe it is, but I don't understand that from an architectural perspective, how that's a solution.
Yes.
From an architectural, uh, uh, the solution for us, the point here, the solution for us is to make the space work for the theater. What you see through the vision glass is something that we want the theater to be able to present to us and then we would come back and present to you. Because we, the whole idea here is to make this building a much more visually interesting building for people visiting the South Street Seaport.
But that, but you were doing is you're saying, I don't know, the tenant has to take care of it.
Well, today, today, like, we're not changing the building itself, right?
Right.
It's the same on this elevation. Right now, if you go there today, you're, you may not be able to see where the Bodies in Motion posters are up, for example. I'm not opposing that that's what we need.
I'm sorry to be, I don't have to-
No, 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 you didn't want to hear it.
So it could be art, it could be something, okay, digital, something, you don't, it could be anything. You're just saying, you're leaving it as glass or a vision, whatever, that's, that's what you know.
We believe it's better for it to be vision glass and something interesting behind the glass than to put up spandrel glass. Because we don't believe spandrel glass is the right use.
But is like, like that a requirement of the lease? I mean, do we regulate what happens? We don't, right? Four feet back of our, of the window, we're done.
We do look at situations where the, you know, effectively you're, you're enclosing the entire space.
Enclosing the space. So does this qualify for that?
Yeah.
Does, right?
So let's say you got a theater and tenant there and says, you know what, I love the sheet rock, I'm leaving it alone. Could he, could he not come back here and just say, you know what?
It's good.
Well, it's before you have a sheet rock.
Right.
That's what he says.
Not to mention the studs that you can't get to to, right?
Okay, and if, is this completed?
Just one more section.
Okay.
This is the site, site work portion of our presentation. So here are your existing site conditions, as Chris and Elise explained before. Along Fulton Street, you have your cobblestone running into your granite curb and then into your bluestone. And here you can see actually the, the bluestone apron that exists there now. Continue along Fulton Street, cobblestone and bluestone. South Street is concrete right now. And then Beekman is, you have a section of bluestone and then your concrete driveway into your loading docks. And then you come back around to Front Street and you have your, your bluestone and cobblestone. So what we wanted to do was, as Chris had mentioned before, is bring the bluestone around the building and create a nice consistent band, as well provide accessibility into the Fulton Street side of the building. So we're actually taking the bluestone. What you're seeing here is the, the darker color is the new bluestone and the gray is the, the old, obviously it would match, but that's just the diagram. We bring the bluestone out in front of the Fulton Street facade and then we'd actually take the concrete and replace it with bluestone to match all the way around to Beekman Street. And then you have the new bluestone taking the place of the old concrete driveway. And then here's your new concrete driveway into loading dock. This is just a closer up diagram showing what I just explained. This brings us to the end.
Okay, further questions before we go to testimony? I think we've had an exhaustive presentation and we'll go quickly to testimony, we'll come back to you in a moment. Barbara Say, please.
Barbara Say of the Historic Districts Council. HDC laments the scattershot planning and philosophical retreat from the market origins of the South Street Seaport, a shift that has been highly contested and discussed in many forums. This market building was constructed in the spirit of urban renewal to accommodate a large number of individual market stalls. Yet what was, yet what our committee saw at public review on Friday indicated a ground floor layout that would accommodate just two large stores. So that was one of the reasons we had thought that there would be big box retail in there. We urged them not to, to have such a layout. Discussion of the building's use aside, HDC finds that much of the proposed work does not improve Benjamin Thompson's original design, but rather is quite unnecessary. The purpose of the proposed double height openings on the ground level is unclear and the overall design of the ground floor entrances strips away the current configuration, whose elegant bay rhythm relates nicely to the curves of the canopy above. The flattening of the ground floor roof makes the canopies look as if they are floating above, no longer connected to the roof below and standing as a reminder that the building's transformation has rendered it simply an homage to its former iteration. HDC feels that the installation of opaque black panels in place of the character-defining green panels is an unfortunate step toward the dumbing down of the building's charm. The advent of big box retail is on full display in the plans for signage, which appear to cluttered and bright lighting and spotlights that overwhelm both the building and the district. HDC wonders whether plans exist for the original structure concerning how signage and/or lighting schemes were intended to work. If so, such plans should be consulted. Overall, HDC finds that the original design possesses more character than what is being proposed and asks that the waste of construction materials be spared if the changes are not deemed absolutely necessary for the building to continue to serve the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Christabel Goff.
Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. Evidently, the city has in large part abandoned the spirit of the nineteen eighties' plans to revive the South Street Seaport. So it is unsurprising that aspects of this building, which related to those plans, are to be demolished. When we examined the boards of, we're delighted to hear that you're planning to have small retailers, but we don't see that reflected in the designs that we reviewed on Friday. So it is to be regretted that the individual spaces, which recall the smaller spaces devoted to individual fish market vendors, are now to be incorporated into an entity presumably for a rather different tenancy. It is hard to understand why either tourists or New Yorkers would seek out this location. Whether this will in fact occur remains to be seen, but the role of the Landmarks Commission in the transaction will be part of the history of Lower Manhattan. And in passing, the undersized mosaic of bluestone pavers presented here is totally without historic presence. The commission has approved it both here and in other locations, for example, around the Jefferson Market Building in Greenwich Village. We believe it's not successful. The widely available domestic landscaping product has been used in historic districts occasionally in the past, but it does not meet current standards. It can be called bluestone, but visually it bears no resemblance to the massive blocks of stone that once paved the Seaport's streets. The nineteen eighties' development plan, in other ways at least, attempted to retain some reference to the district's history in its new interventions. A good place to revive that initiative would be in the public sidewalks and roadbeds of the Seaport and we hope that you will ask for a change to that paving. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Community Board, best I can tell, first of all, is there other testimony?
I'm here, yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed with Community Board One?
Oh, good, good, perfect.
A lot of it's been said before, but. Whereas the material proposed for the new extruded-
Say your name.
Jason Friedman, Community Board One, Landmarks. The material proposed for the new extruded metal storefront is an improvement to the existing damaged postmodern storefront along Fulton and Front Streets and storefront added on Beekman Street softens the back of building feeling between South and Front Street. And whereas the applicant's decision to remove the stalls along South Street is not in keeping with the preservation of the historic fish market. However, the reactivation of the South Street between Beekman and Fulton Streets is long overdue. And whereas the proposed bluestone pavers at the enlarged sidewalk areas along Fulton Street are consistent with other stone pavers found within the district and signage for this application is in keeping with the LPC guidelines for signage. Actual signage was not presented and any multiplex signage or exterior kiosks should be reviewed at future public hearing. And the existing has been, building has been closed since Superstorm Sandy. The applicant is projecting a fall 2015 opening date for the new multiplex. The Community Board expects the applicant to do all that they can to meet and exceed all construction deadlines within the South Street Seaport. And whereas the proposed bluestone pavers will be installed so that the area would be in compliance with ADA accessible standards. And whereas committee members express concern regarding the awkward appearance and potential accumulation of trash and pigeons along the edge of Fulton Street under the gap between the awning and the new extended area. Now, therefore be it resolved, Community Board One recommends that Landmarks Preservation, Preservation Commission approve the proposed renovation of the Fulton Market Building and do so in a timely manner. And, and therefore further be it resolved, the Community Board recommends that Landmarks Preservation work more closely with the Howard Hughes Corporation, the South Port, South, South Street Seaport Museum, and the Community Board to protect the buildings in the South Street Seaport Historic District, including any permissions granted to install large temporary structures or remove any further evidence of the unique eighteenth through nineteenth, through twentieth century fish market history.
Does it clarify, is that the full board committee or what is it?
Sorry, that's Landmarks only, right.
The Landmarks Committee of Community Board.
Tonight is the full board meeting and that was a ten, ten in favor. Ten people in favor, one recused.
Okay, good, thank you for clarifying that. Any other testimony? Okay, any comment or response to anything that's been said? You're welcome to do it now or not do it, whatever you want. Anybody.
Elise Quasmar.
Yeah.
I just, there are only a couple of things that we'd like to respond to. One of them is, I think that Chris made a point, that the new storefronts actually have more detail and shadow line and texture than the existing storefronts. We actually think that it is an improvement to the existing condition. And while Christabel Goff's comments about the sidewalk, I think, are accurate. Bluestone pavers used to be big, comfy things. What's being proposed is to actually match the existing condition.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know the thickness of those pavers, is that in here?
Of the existing?
Of the proposed pavers, the thick, the thickness.
Don't want to talk about it.
Okay.
They do have a discussion.
Well, we can talk about it, yeah.
Thank you.
Wow, this is sort of tough, I think. First of all, I think any building in the, built in the eighties is, is probably reached the nadir of its reputation. And, and will, I think, move up the ladder in, in subsequent years. But it is hard for all of us to look at this and not think back to those eighties. I went along with the destruction, which is now well underway, I see, from my house, of the Pier Seventeen, thinking that it was an inferior building to this pavilion. And I think Ben Thompson deserves and is getting, I, this building will live on and I think that's appropriate as a layering of, of, of the total history of, of the Seaport. So the question is, you know, what, what about the changes itself? I think it's a good thing the building is being retained. And then the question is literally each of these changes. I don't want to go through all, each, each and every one. I think generally, you're dealing with what you have. A marketplace which is vastly changed, sadly vastly changed, I think. There was a time, at least in the, for a while in the eighties, when this was kind of an exciting place to be. So maybe it will become again without the fish, without a lot of other things and with maybe sadly, a bunch of movie theaters. Okay, I got that off my chest. So, so I had that comment about the, about the awning and, and the idea that the awning was sitting over something that was never meant to sit over. But I realize now in the subsequent presentation that you made that the, that these little projections are episodic, they're not consistent across a whole facade. So they pop in and out, so I think, I think that's okay. And the consistency and the retention of the awning is, is, is an important thing. The replacement of the curtain wall with a richer curtain wall with deeper recesses and so forth in the design is a good thing. To me, the, the regrettable thing is this four foot space and on the second floor. And I, I understand that you're not prepared because the, the, the centiplex is not prepared to have a design for that. And I'm of two minds, I mean, maybe I don't want to see anything back there pretending it's something else or do we want to see some vibrant display, you know, I'm not sure what, but it's a little odd not to have, to have it described and it being just a, a white box for now, a white four foot deep box. If, if we can be assured that the commission will, will visit, will, will have to revisit that and it, and it won't retain, be retained, as Michael said, as a, just, well, we don't need to come back, we're just going to leave it a white sheet rock. I think that, that's unacceptable to me, so. I'm sure other people have other comments, but those are, oh, oh, one more, the bluestone. So I'm sure other people have other comments, but those are -- oh, one more, the bluestone. Lot of great stuff we learned this morning about bluestone, and one of the more extraordinary of many failing bluestone put in in the '80s and '90s, by the way, Borough Hall in Brooklyn. I think this team could learn a little bit from what Parks Department has learned, and maybe don't think bluestone, but maybe think granite.
All righty. Let me start off by saying that I think that the applicants have done some very remarkable things that we've seen and approved here at the Pier 17 project. And whatever one may think about other parts of it that aren't on the Landmark District, I think the landmark portions are really remarkable and very -- they promised to be very interesting and very good. And I look forward to the finishing of that with the tin building and whatever happens to that, which I hope will be a good thing. And this building, though, I have to say, I really don't think rises to that level yet. And I think it comes, for me, in thinking about both the position of this building within the district and the history of this particular building. The district was revived by, through the efforts of the developers, to make this festival marketplace, which was really, although architecturally maybe not the most wonderful of times, urbanistically was on the vanguard of making New York City a better place and many other cities, inner cities reclaimed. So I think it's -- and the motivation behind it for this building was to somehow capture in an institutional way, and perhaps a bit tamely and meekly and backhandedly, the energy and vitality of the city or of this part of the city that it sought to embody. And as such, the building's use of both high materials and low, limestone and corrugated metal, the awnings, which were purposefully, if maybe a bit meekly, echoing of the industrial vernacular of the place. That was an attempt to kind of capture that energy or recapture it and reuse it for a different era. And I think that to the extent that this project's modifications seek to upgrade, polish, erase, efface that attempt to hold on to the earlier aspect of the neighborhood, the Seaport aspect of it, where there were small vendors and lots of noise and lots of smells and lots of visual clutter, I think it's just unfortunate, and it goes in the wrong direction. It makes a building that was already a compromised, tamed-down version of a very active part of New York, a very genuine part of the city, even more tame. It makes it worse. It makes the aspects of it that we think of as bad worse. And I think that many of the decisions that went into this go in that direction. For instance, the flat roofs over the extensions, okay? The angled roofs, which it seems to me were not really meant to be seen as glass but were covered with canvas much of the time, were -- they, for me, suggested a kind of ad hoc accretion to a market building. And their adhockness maybe was belied by the regularity of the mullions, the color of the mullions, the permanence of the structures, et cetera. But that adhockness is only made worse by these boxes, which render the canopies kind of forgotten. And the boxes seem more permanent. And in a way, the work that the applicants did at Pier 17 with the agglomeration of little boxes with different colors and different shapes under the big glass box was more in the direction of this kind of faux ad hoc quality than this, where everything's regularized, where the mullions above and the mullions below are all the same, and you have this kind of very hard architectural quality to these boxes. I think that that is true of the Fulton, of the South Street garage doors. The garage doors are the last vestige of the fish stalls. You know, maybe you keep the garage doors and remove the partitions, but I think that the notion of South Street, yes, with concrete and asphalt, or whatever the roadbed material is, the existing roadbed, that is the last physical remnant of the Seaport as a kind of sales prototype paradigm. And I think that the modification of the use can be retained while still preserving the difference of South Street from the other three sides of this building. I think that that same comment goes to the change from corrugated material to a leucabond. I mean, you've got, the corrugated was their little fig leaf of industrialized, industrial material. Keep it, use it, do more of it. A leucabond is the quintessential suburban spec office building material, and I think that it's, it makes it colder, it makes it worse. I think that, for me, the embodying image was Image 15 and Image 16 in the books, where, you know, on 16, the proposed, we have, we've erased all the windows on the second floor, we've put brick there with downlighting, which will only accentuate the blankness of those walls, versus the existing condition. Well, I mean, look, it's not Palladio, but at least you've got a kind of visual life going on under that canopy. There's their windows, and you see into things in those windows. And I think that there's a lot of areas here where the direction shouldn't be to make it more like a suburban mall, make it less like a suburban mall.
Marjorie.
So this gets down, thank you, this gets down to the subject again of retaining the grit. We have this conversation in all of our industrial districts, where there's this desire to clean up every single neighborhood and make them all the same. And just like the struggles we have in Meatpacking and the struggles we have in SoHo and in NoHo, these are not shopping mall districts, they're districts that are industrial manufacturing districts. And actually, for me, the most telling image is the photograph of 23, where it's the agglomeration of the structure that slips under the canopy, and it's a little bit of everything, and it's got different kinds of doors, and it's, that's sort of the messy grittiness that was the only thing that was kind of a redeeming characteristic about this 1980s building. And the walk when you're on Beekman, that walk, which is kind of a dreary walk, but at the same time, it's the scale of really the fish market. And you have those little restaurants and all of that that are, that peek up across the street, and you actually should be drawing into that kind of dynamic to complete Beekman and not sort of cheer it up and maul it up and so on. So I completely agree with Michael, that the direction is too plain vanilla and too white bread, et cetera, et cetera, and all those tasteless, you know, things without taste. So I do think that there needs to be an approach that remembers about the grit. So, but with the specific issues, my biggest problem is actually, well, to the canopy, if there are going to be these projections the same way as there are existing, and if the projections, I also agree that the projections need to be more varied, more, they don't need to be regularized, I don't agree that the canopy can just sort of fly over them and have no purpose. If anything, you should be researching what happens in manufacturing districts, not just this one, because there's so few left that have, so few buildings left that have canopies, but look in Meatpacking, look in other places where there are existing canopies, and what happens when the property owner needed to install some sort of a, you know, there were money-collecting booths. There were all kinds of things that were added onto these buildings in order to make the operation function. What were their configurations like with respect to the canopy? What happened to the canopy? Was it extended? Because I don't have an objection to the idea that the canopy gets deeper if it's going to still work proportionately with the accretions. The accretions should look like accretions and not like some cleaned-up little, little perfect thing. And then the other part of it is, especially because the proposal is for a multiplex theater, it's not St. Anne's Warehouse, where if it was St. Anne's taking over, I would say, you know, we'll be okay because they have sort of the right attitude, and they'll fill it in with these amazing costumes or something like that, that space between the vision glass and the sheet rock, and we'll be good. But in fact, we know what a multiplex will do. There'll be, if we're lucky, posters of whatever's showing. And if we're unlucky, there'll be really old posters that are peeling off that they haven't seen in years, and they can't figure out how to find that little trap door to get them off, and it'll just look terrible. And so I actually do not think that this is the tenant's responsibility, it's the landlord's responsibility to come up with a solution where if the tenant doesn't provide some agreeable installation in, within the four feet, then there has to be a landlord solution, that there is something, corrugated panels, some other kind of treatment of the glazing that is, that does not force us to be looking at the peeling posters from, you know, 1986 equivalent. And then, you know, and we did look at St. Anne's with their proposal, they also had a problem with portions where the theater was going to be where vision glasses, and they actually dealt with that. They had an architectural solution to deal with that architectural problem, and this needs an architectural solution. And then, lastly, just to reiterate what Fred said, we learned a lot about the pavers, we learned that bluestone pavers fail, and that actually the only way to go about this is granite pavers of a minimum thickness of three inches. So, yeah. Learn from others.
Libby, thank you. Thanks, Marjorie.
Well, you know, it's a mall company, so I don't know why I'm surprised we're seeing anything other than a mall. You know, malls around the country are struggling. There's this company that I was only too well, and I think it was the residents fleeing various ways, that's the shopping experience. And so I can understand why you want to follow those residents, but I think there's something different needs to be presented here. There's things that I like about this proposal. I think the increased transparency and glass all over the building are terrific, and it's going to draw people into it. And certainly, the improved lighting underneath the canopy is also going to draw people to this project. You know, this is sort of a hard thing, because it's not exactly a historic building, it's sort of a fake historic building, and now we're trying to govern that. That's not something that we really have, I don't think, a lot of precedent for how to work with. So, I mean, I told you the things I like. I think the retention of the canopy is terrific. I think we've got way too many signs, but that's because you're anticipating lots of different retailers who are very small, then I think we can support that basis. And with respect to this issue about what happens with a theater like South Hill Windows, I'm very alarmed, this faces the FDR, and it's what you see, like, as you drive by.
No, it's South Street. South Street is FDR. Fulton Street isn't that.
It's the Fulton Street side that's going to be blanked.
Yeah.
No, he sounds like you.
South Street.
I thought it was South Street.
South Street.
So, wow, what a great advertising place. I mean, I can't imagine that you're going to let that go foul. But certainly, the proposed design looks like it could happen, so my issues with that. I know those are very general comments, but I hope you'll focus on the things that seem to be very positive, like transparency and lighting.
Yeah.
And encouragement of small retailers.
Well, one thing, actually, there's been a lot said about bluestone pavers, and I noted during that earlier discussion that they were saying that they were actually very thin and layered, so I don't know if that indicates that all bluestone pavers are a problem. And on the other hand, if you're going to have a lot of traffic here of all sorts, which you are, why, it is perhaps, yes, well-advised to use granite. To get back to the general take here, it's an interesting and difficult discussion because, yeah, we had an original Fulton Market building here, and the 1980s building has a few references to that, and that's it. And, you know, really, it's a building that doesn't have much in common with it, and neither does this one, but, you know, that's not something we're asking for a return, I think, to that, which is a very, you know, dark and sort of feeling like an enclosed building that has little filtered light in it. Talking about attracting and increasing transparency and light and bringing visitors to it, none of those are gritty, but I agree with Libby that that's desirable for the clientele, certainly. And, yeah, I like the canopies as well. I think this is, and we're almost talking like, you know, kind of what's the value of the current building? And, you know, a shape and a structure, maybe, I don't know. It's not, it's not, it's not something that anyone could say is really representing the concept of the market itself here. So, and I'm talking about the 80s building right now, not theirs at the moment, but I don't know where to tell them to go with this. I think we're seeing a lot of things that don't necessarily work together. I guess, yes, I could see a more industrial feel, but I do think that the transparency and the light is very, very important. And I don't think that if they're, insofar as they try to go in that direction and produce something that's a little more like mall and generic, that they shouldn't lose making it an attractive and welcoming space. So I don't know how helpful those comments are.
Okay. Well, something's got to happen here, one way or the other. So, yes, Rivera.
Just a couple of comments. With the canopy, I think I like the overall idea of the canopy, but I do have problems with the spaces that sort of go out, and I think that we're talking about not just the grittiness, and if you actually had those canopies over those raised spaces, you would have, like, I think, like, little urban divisions.
That would be great. Yes.
There would be. No, I was going to say that there's some things we need to still get. The signs, I agree with the commission, right, that there are maybe too many, and that in terms of even how it's presented to us, that there should be fewer signs that are shown, especially those two signs that are blown up, for instance. And at the upper level, the glass in front of the area that Fulton come to the theater, I think that we, I would like to know what that is.
Yeah.
Even though that's not on the outside, I'd like to know because I think we see it, and it does affect a few, so we feel that the building exists, a black wall versus something happening here, so I think we need to.
Okay. Excuse me. Okay, clarification on that and some of the other points. It's not possible to synthesize all the problems with this, but I think everyone's going to have to rethink and get together and move this ahead. We can't, it can't just lie without, I mean, it's not possible. So just as we struggled over Pier 17, and as Michael said, that was a good solution, that eventually a consensus was built around, I think we've got to go through that here and stick to it and get that done. And this is the first take, and all of that can be thrashed around with us, our staff, and then we'll take it and then figure out a way through it. So I think a lot of constructive suggestions and a lot of things that are doable, retainable in your plan, and we just need those modifications. So we'll work on that, you'll work with us, and we'll see where we go. We can't take, obviously can't take any action today, and we'll close this hearing for that purpose. Motion to close in a second without objection. Hearing is closed. Thank you. Okay. Last item?[1785.76]